We've got a, we've got a lot of people here today. And so we're really excited that this is such a great turnout. We also have people online. So if you can't hear me in the room, please remind me to use the microphone. Because I want the people online to be able to hear us as well. So this is what we're calling our, our M Part PFAS Community Meeting. For the Wexford area of interest, self sampling investigation. My name's Abby Hendershot. I'm the Executive Director for the Michigan PFAS Action Response Team. And a couple of things before we just get, uh, do some housekeeping before we get started. So in the room today, we have a huge team. We've brought a lot of people to be able to answer questions and support you and give you the answers that you guys need. So in the room, we've got Eagle staff, we've got our Department of Health and Human Services. We've got our Department of Natural Resources, our Department of Agriculture. We've also got our local health department, we've got the city, we've got the township, we've got our advocates. So if they're not in the room, they're probably not part of the conversation. Cause I think we've invited everybody and their brother. So the meeting today is, we're going to start with the presentation. The presentation will go through some stuff. If you've listened to one of our presentations before. We're going to go through some of the stuff that we have covered before. But because we had focused before just on Cadillac industrial area. There's probably people here who have, have not attended one of our previous meetings. So we want to make sure we cover all the basic information on PFAS. As far as the logistics for today's meeting, in case of an emergency, we have an emergency exit over there. The front doors, bathrooms are out the back, if anything happens, those are your exits. This meeting is recorded, so we have both the TV channels recording it as well as Eagle is recording it. So that the whole meeting and all the proceedings, questions and answers can be given back out with a link. So if somebody's not here to actually hear the presentation and be in the room. They can actually see it later on tonight or tomorrow. We will have plenty of times for questions and answers at the end. If you signed in and you left us your email, phone number. We will get you a copy of this slide presentation. So make sure that you sign in before you leave. If you didn't already sign in on your way in, because we want to be able to get, add you to our distribution list as well as give you those handouts. Let's see, what else? I think those are the big things. So let's go ahead and get started. Alright, whoops. So as far as an agenda for today's meeting, I'm going to go through an M Part overview. Yep, go ahead and Josh, come on up. I'm going to go through an M Part overview of, of what M Part is, what it means, what PFAS are. Then Josh is going to talk about the health piece. He's our toxicologist with the Department of Health and Human Services. Rob Crane here is our District Health Department Number 10 Lead. And he's going to talk about filters. And then Brandy Wheeler is our Site Lead and Public Manager for Department of Environmental, Great Lakes and Energy. She's going to talk to you specifically about the investigations and her findings. Scott down here on the end, Scott Konzerzky is with Eagle as well. He's going to talk about public water supplies. And all the sampling that's been done in and around of those public water supplies for Cadillac as well. So let's talk a little bit about PFAS. I will look through this pretty quickly because I know a number of you have heard this stuff before. When the reason you're here is if you do know about PFAS. But for those who may not have that background. PFAS, when I say that, the whole PFAS, I'm talking about whole family of compounds. Those are all a very large group of manmade chemicals, very strong carbon fluorine bonds. Usually used as surfactants, very, very stable. So they repel the water, the oil spex and greases. We started in the 1940s. And today there's thousands and thousands, depending on how you define, could be somewhere between 10 to 15,000 different chemicals. The problem is, once they get into the ecosystem, they really don't biodegrade. They can bio transform, but they don't really break down in sunlight, in naturals, natural conditions. So they are very hard to get rid of. They can bio accumulate in our bodies. Most everybody in the room here has PFAS in their blood already, just from the way we use it in our everyday world. PFAS, we know have health effects. And so Josh is going to talk a little bit more about that. There's a lot of emerging science and information. Since we started this PFAS journey six years ago, a lot more is known today than was known then. And we do have federal standards for drinking water. So that's a good step forward. When you talk about PFAS uses, the reason it's so complex is because we use PFAS in so many everyday products. Everything from carpet cleaning products to food packaging. To, you know, the couch that you sit on at home has probably got some sort of a stain resistant. Your carpets are probably stain improved, your, your paints are going to have that scrubable quality, which are going to make them PFAS resistant. And then your non-stick cookware, your car seats, household cleaners, your clothing, outdoor gear, anything that's waterproofed. Stain resistant or has a surfactant quality that allows things to spread, to be spread easily. The sealants and stuff is going to have some sort of a PFAS component. Firefighting foam is, does have PFAS in some of the firefighting foam, not necessarily in all of it. So it depends on which type of fire they're trying to, to fight. So next slide. So when we talk about M Parts, that's an acronym you're going to hear a lot today. We're talking about our Michigan PFAS Action Response Team. It's made up of seven different state agencies, many of whom are in the room today with you. All of those agencies have a role to talk about PFAS. Department of Transportation is going to work with our airports, Natural Resources, obviously our fish and wildlife. Agriculture is going to work with our farms and our aquaculture. Local Health Department's going to work with our public and with actually handing out filters, doing those on the ground responses. Military is all of our military sites. State Public Health is going to be doing a lot of that research where we don't have time today to go into a lot of the research doing. But there is a ton of work going on around PFAS and at the state level for public health. Eagle's going to be doing a lot of the environmental investigations. And then obviously licensing and regulatory affairs is where the Fire Marshal's offices help. And so our State Fire Marshal is in Lara. So they all have a piece of this puzzle and part of the reason. M Part is actually not a regulatory body. So as a non-regulatory piece, my job is to do communication, coordination and collaboration. And to keep everybody going in the same direction with a strategic response. So every project team, which is why we brought so many people today, every project team has these people involved. Depending on the needs of the specific situation. So we'll have our Eagle Investigation Team talking about groundwater residential well sampling. Wastewater discharge, surface water, fish collection, public drinking water and biosalts. DHHS will be bringing our toxicologists, our geologists, epidemiologists, health educator, community engagement. And then they also issue the Eat Safe Fish Guides. And then local health is talking about filter deployment, community outreach. We work as a team. And I'm not even kidding you, we've probably had a hundred meetings on Cadillac alone since we had our first town hall last year in September. So we are meeting weekly with our team. We're meeting every other week with the local officials, with the local advocates. To try to keep everybody up to date on the data and what we're seeing. So investigation process, just to kind of give you an idea, when we become aware of a site where groundwater is over criteria. Or where we have elevated results from a private drinking water well, that's kind of what starts the whole process. We look for other sampling results that might indicate potential sources from surface water or other routine monitoring data. That project team then is formed to make sure that we are coming together to look at the data in a holistic manner. And then try to put together a strategy to identify additional, if there's additional homes that need to be sampled. Michigan does have standards. So you may have seen in the news here that there's some rumblings at the federal level. That EPA might be changing some of their standards when it comes to PFAS. Those are separate and distinct from Michigan standards. Michigan has our own, what we call MCLs, our own maximum contaminant levels for drinking water, for public water supplies. Those are in effect, they are still lawful. And we will continue to keep those standards. So we have them for seven different compounds. PFNA at six parts per trillion down to PFHXA at 400,000 parts per trillion. And the reason you see such a big difference in those numbers is because PFHXA is not as toxic as PFNA. And so each compound is set at its own level because based on those toxicity levels. Again, same type of scenario for Michigan's surface water quality values. We've got regulated five different compounds for PFWA, PFOS, PFBS, PFHXS and PFNA. And those are going to be protective aquatic life as well as human health if accused of drinking source. So self-testing. So one of the things that we just really are so excited about this community, this community has really engaged. We've never seen this in another community where we have had so many people do so much self-testing. This is fabulous. So one of the things that's hard to tell with PFAS is what is in your drinking water? You're not going to see it, you're not going to taste it, you're not going to smell it. So you have to test. Using a laboratory to do that is a great idea. We've got certified PFAS laboratories on our website. As well as a video on how to do that. And you can always talk to our DHHS toxicologist or one of our communicators to talk about what those sample results mean. So if you've already sampled and you want some advice, you don't have to share the, share the results with us. But if you want some advice, feel free to talk to our toxicologists. They're happy to do that. Alright, so I will hand it over to Josh and he will talk more about PFAS and health.
Hi, everybody. Everyone here, okay? Thank you all for coming. I am Josh. I'm a toxicologist here for MDHHS. And if you have any questions about your drinking water results or anything at all, wish to call me or you know me at the information up there. And just to go over a little bit of how MDHHS and the Local Health Department are involved in site response. We as a team are trying to understand the health concerns that are facing the community. As well as working with Eagle, trying to develop and plan to investigate and address any health risks that are identified. So MDHHS and the Local Health Department typically lead the public health planning and response. Whereas Eagle is the one pushing the environmental investigation forward. But we all together as a team evaluate any PFAS exposure that residents could be exposed to in the community. And recommend any public health actions as needed. And that's usually through filter recommendations. Now, the common ways people are exposed to PFAS is primarily through drinking contaminated water as well as eating fish from surface water bodies that have PFAS contamination. There are these Eat Safe Fish Guidelines that were mentioned earlier where you can look up specific bodies of water and see what kind of guidelines there are to see how much fish is safe to eat. There's also incidental swallowing contaminated soil or dust, which is more for children and like hand-to-mouth behavior if they're outside. And as Abby mentioned earlier, there's a lot of PFAS still present in food packaging and consumer products. One thing that's important to note is that PFAS isn't easily absorbed through your skin. So we're not usually worried. So it's safe to use for bathing and cleaning, that sort of thing. This slide is showing a study that was done in the US, testing the average concentrations of PFAS in a bunch of people's blood. And as you can see on the left-hand side, that's the concentration, on the bottom, that's the years that were sampled. And the most important thing is that you can see everyone in the start, or a large proportion of the population had PFAS present in their blood. And over time, you can see that the concentration has decreased for each of the PFAS that are listed above. Yeah, and that's through phase out and more regulation, so. Now to go over some of the associated human health outcomes for PFWA and PFOS. These are some of the most widely researched PFAS. There's reduced fertility, high blood pressure, or we can have seen pregnant women. As well as small decreases in infant birth weight and increases in cholesterol, specifically LDL and total. There's also thyroid disease, liver damage, decrease in immune system response to vaccines. And certain types of cancer has a higher chance of, of susceptibility, particularly kidney and testicular. Now, when MDHHS is determining public health response actions, we're looking at multiple things. We're looking at the MDHHS comparison values that you, you guys, or Abby also mentioned earlier with their M Part MCLs. And then we also look at the residential well results individually and collectively. And also any site-specific information that's available. And we'll go into a little bit more detail in the next couple of slides. For MDHHS comparison values, MDHHS uses our public health drinking water screening levels, which is the lowest of two sets of values. Abby mentioned that M Part MCLs. And they're, they're pretty much the same as MDHHS except for one PFAS where we use just a slightly lower value. But the important thing to note for whichever value is used, that they were both developed and set at levels that are meant to protect everyone. And that includes the most susceptible vulnerable populations like fetuses and breastfeeding babies. So here are the MDHHS comparison values that we're talking about. The PFOS at the top, that's the only one that's different from the M Part MCLs. It's at eight instead of 16. And so, so yeah, they're pretty much exactly the same except for PFOS at the top there. And these are what we use to compare your well, well, well results and see if it's exceeding or if it's exceeding these values. When we look at residential well results individually, like I said, we're comparing them against those comparison values on that table. And generally, we're giving people that are exceeding those values, filters as an alternative water recommendation. Until a more permanent solution is. And for collectively, we're looking at all, in, in step, in addition to the single well result. All the well results in the area, because it could be indicative of. It'll help determine if there's actually something to be concerned about. Such as in this scenario where there's a detection in the middle with the blue houses. And all the houses around that house are not detect. And in the, in a similar scenario, maybe they have the same concentration, but this, this scenario, they're in an area where there are many other exceedances. So we would believe that there might be a plume in that area or some sort of source. And we would most likely recommend a filter for the residents surrounded by the exceedances and might not afford that resident around all the non-detects. We also look at site-specific information such as a known source, which is very helpful. Geology of the location, including groundwater flow direction, the lithology, like the soil composition of the, of the site. And then if there's like a known plume in the area. We also look at surface water bodies around the areas such as like lakes, river streams that might change. Change how people might be exposed. And now, once we make the evaluation, MDHHS and Local Health Department work together to for the public health response action where if most of the results are not detect, we will, will given. We will determine that there are no public health actions that are necessary. And if we find that there is something that is a concern, then we'll recommend a filter or an alternative water source. And that's to give time for additional investigation and to protect residents in case there's any fluctuations in the PFAS levels. While the investigation is ongoing. And one of the primary tools that we use is education. Where we try to talk with individual residents about their specific situations that they wish to. And provide any information on how to mitigate exposure and learn if they're being exposed to PFAS. So when we're talking about filters, I just want to make one thing clear is that MDHHS are the ones generally doing the evaluation section. And the Local Health Department are the ones that follow through on that and work with the residents to get them the filter. So, and talking about those filters. It's important to know, I think there's fact sheets out there with, about the filters. But there are these standards that you have to make sure you pay attention to because otherwise the filter that you have might not be certified to remove the amount of PFAS that would be acceptable. So, and another really important thing to note is that a lot of these aren't super easy to install. So I probably couldn't do it, but someone who has a little bit of plumbing knowledge might be able to. So that's, it's very important that you install it correctly. Okay, and just to go over like the Eat Safe Fish Guidelines, this is from the Lake Mitchell and Lake Cadillac areas. And these safe fish guidelines are derived from a study where they go around the state collecting fish samples from different water bodies. And depending on the concentration of of contaminants that they find in the fish, they will derive a value. And those safe fish guidelines will be put out. So these are the current safe fish guidelines for Lake Cadillac and Lake Mitchell. As you can see, they're primarily driven by mercury and not PFAS at the moment. But as you saw in that previous slide. There are PFAS that are present in some of the blue gill that were found in Lake Mitchell, Lake Cadillac. And so the safe fish guidelines are not yet updated, but they should be updated hopefully soon. And I'll hand it over to the District Health Department.
Thank you, Josh, and thanks to everyone coming out here today. Yeah, my name is Rob Crane. I'm here representing your Local Health Department, District Health Department Number 10. And I'm going to talk a little bit about those point-of-use home filters that Josh was talking about. So as Josh mentioned, you may qualify for a free point-of-use filter from the Local Health Department. And, and how does that work? So first thing that's going to happen is you'll receive communication from Michigan Department of Health and Human Services recommending a water filtration system. So a toxic, usually a toxicologist from MDHHS is going to make a phone call to you, ask you. And not only saying, hey, you qualified for a filter, but maybe answering questions that you may have health-related questions. Okay, you're also going to receive a follow-up communication from District Health Department Number 10. Encouraging you to pick up that point-of-use filter from, from our office there. Your local office is on Cobb Street, kind of at a hospital. I'm sure you all are familiar with that. If you have questions or concerns about receiving a filter or your filter installation or filter maintenance, you can contact me. There's my contact information listed there. If you provided your email, I don't know if that was mentioned yet, but if you do provide your email there when you sign in, you will be provided a deck of these slides. I'm also going to be hanging around afterwards. I've got business cards. We'll have our, our table in the back there too. So please, please come ask questions. That's why we're here. What to expect when you're picking up your filtration system? So your MDHHS or District Health Department Number 10 letter, if you bring that with you, that provides proof that you are eligible to receive a filter. We also keep a list. MDHHS provides us a list of those homes that are recommended for that filter. So hopefully we'll have that list too, but these things are continuously evolving. So if you do have a copy of that letter too, that's just one more resource that we have to know that you are who you said you are and that your home is recommended for that filter. And then what you'll receive. A filter, a box of replacement cartridges. So the cartridges need to be replaced. I'll get into that in just a moment. A phone number for you to call to have a plumber install your filter. Again, it's free of charge. Like Josh said, you know, some of you could probably handle that on your own if you've got a little bit of do-it-yourself knowledge. But it's free to have, have the local contractor come out and install that for you. And we're going to try and help you out with that too. You're also going to receive instructions on how to maintain your filter, replace cartridges and what to do if, if parts fail or break. A little bit more about your filter. These filters are NSF certified. Each filter cartridge is set to last about six months or 800 gallons of water. You will need to get a new set of cartridges from District Health Department Number 10 every six months. So another thing that we do is we send out a reminder letter to those homes that do qualify for that filter every six months. To remind you, come on down to the Health Department and get, get your replacement filter. The filter is to be installed under the kitchen sink and stay in the home where the drinking water is found to contain PFAS. So it's been rare, but we've had people move out and take the filter with them. And then we gotta go back out there and install another filter. Those, that's meant, is part of this project is those filters are meant to stay in place for that home. And then you may dispose of your used cartridges in your household trash. They are not considered hazardous material. Again, any questions, please feel free to contact me. There's my phone number, my email, and I'll be around here after the presentation. And I think now I hand it off to Scott. Thank you.
Hello. Right, so my name is Brandy Wheeler. So I work for Eagle. I'm part of the remediation redevelopment division. So that means that usually I'm dealing with the ground and groundwater. I'm just part of the massive team that we've talked about before. So I'm going to start getting into the science of it. I promise I will try to make it as digestible as possible. We have nice maps. It's a lot, it's ongoing and it's just what we found since the last town hall. Just updating everybody on what we found. I'm also available. Everyone will be here afterwards. My contact information. If you ever have any questions, you can always reach out. So to kind of get started, we're going to kind of orient ourselves. So when I'm talking about homes, their wells, what aquifers. So we have different aquifers, about the sand layers, the clay layers. Out here we have a lot of sand and clay. When we have homes that come up with a detection or maybe an exceedance of PFAS, it can be sort of hard to figure out whether or not homes next to it are affected or not. So when we're talking about that, we mean that your home is set at 70 feet and maybe your neighbors isn't. You might also be only 50 feet away and be in completely different geology. So when we're looking at depth, distance, directions, any other detections in the area, we're looking at stuff like concentration. If we can find your well information, we're going to look at that as well. Geology and hydrogeology, anything we know about the aquifer from something nearby, we always look through our files, files from other divisions. And just anything that we know nearby. So those are those type of things that we talk about whenever we get into meetings and whenever we receive information for people's homes. So this map, it might be kind of hard. It's a very broad area that we've been discussing. We also have a copy of this upfront if you want to look at it closer. Or you'll get a copy in the PowerPoint slide presentation. So just to kind of orient, we have those orange boxes. Those are where we are currently investigating. Those are out in Boone, those are near the airport, near Plet Road and that, that roundabout that you guys might know. And south of town and a couple of the subdivisions down there. We also have on there some older investigations that we did. So we have that kind of green box next to that yellow box near the industrial park. So the yellow box is the industrial park. The green is kind of where we have investigated in the past. We also have the purple box, which is an investigation we've been doing for the last several months as well. And then there's a really light blue one that I'm so sorry you guys probably can't see very well, but that's also another one. Just so that we're all on the same page when we're talking about the next couple of slides. So we've been doing data-driven approaches. So when M Part is investigating, they're investigating for exposure and risk. That is direct point exposure to people's homes, their drinking water, what they're ingesting. That's a little bit of a different approach than typically for like the remediation redevelopment division. We usually focus on what is in the ground, the groundwater, the aquifers and stuff like that. So when we're doing exposure and risk, it's about more well and your well information and where it's pulling from. So we've been doing a lot of investigation into what could potentially be sources. So sources like that, they help inform us. They don't always drive, like a lot of the historic information can be spotty. We're taking a lot of information from the community for what you guys know. Um taking a lot of information from the community for what you guys know about the area. You guys have lived here longer than a lot of us have. Um but we have a lot of potential sources that we've been looking into. And we also evaluate with that, like we said before, we have the whole M Part team, we've got Eagle, we have DHHS, local health and. Everybody who could potentially help us figure something out. So we have our routine update meetings where we all discuss together. Um we've been doing weekly, so. Any new information we all share, we discuss exactly what's going to happen next. So I'm going to get into some of our older investigations first. Uh these are the ones that are closed down or closing down, um and I can explain that in a second. So this is one of the first ones in the area. This is the Misaki Career Tech Center. So this is um. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, they did an investigation out here. Um this is the results from that, so it's presented a little bit different than they probably present now. They do have a total PFAS and they also break it down in each individual one. So these are the results and then the approximate ground flow direction and all of the stuff that we talked about earlier really helped inform us where we're investigating. Um we sampled all the wells around here that we could uh associate with that. Um and we kind of reached an endpoint, a result with that, um. We also have the industrial park area of interest, so that was what we focused heavily on at the end of last year. Um and a lot of early this year, so that one was a much larger investigation, so the industrial park, um. Any of the homes in that area, we sent out access agreements that we could get to. We tried to sample as many people as we could. Uh we ended up sampling ninety homes. Uh we got a lot of information out there. And we kind of just reached an actual endpoint where we kind of ran out of anybody who was willing to let us sample. Um and there were thirteen above the current criteria and we have sixty-one with detections below criteria. We had fifteen. With non-detections and then I think we had one pending result. Um a couple of people have reached out and we've been able to continue sampling for people who are interested now. Um so there's a potential for multiple sources out here. Some PFAS sources can be very, very regional, um. So there's a lot of uh investigation that we've done in this area. So that one's sort of reaching its endpoint and we're continuing sample and if anybody is interested. We also have the US one thirty-one and Mark now are trail area of interest, so that one was closing down because we've kind of sampled everybody who's willing to let us sample as well. We do have a couple pending results for people who denied. So we have, and they're probably a little bit small there, but the green dots are the ones that were no detections. We had one that had a detection, but it was below criteria and then we have the the two businesses there that's um we're above criteria and um. We've helped them with filters and whatnot. So we also have some of the information breakdowns on the size. So then I'm going to get into where we've been currently uh sampling, so. This is stuff where we have just gotten results back or we are currently waiting for some results, so this is as new as we can make it with all the information that we have. So we've been shifting from the industrial park area where we expanded out to sample, um. Just to see if there was anything being affected by the industrial park and now we've moved to. Based on the self-sample results from the community, because you guys have been so engaged with that, it's been incredibly helpful. Um we're sampling the ones immediately adjacent to ones that have exceedances and we're also re-sampling the one with the exceedance. So we have uh the results here, so we have seven back from one of the areas, four, three, four. Um I'll go through those all in individual slides. It's a pretty long, I understand. Um but then on the map here, they're kind of called out a little bit better with uh red stars, but that's just anywhere that has the orange box. And I'll be going through each of those individually. So we have, um it's. The same information that I'll be presenting in a second in the large text format here, so we have um. The the results kind of explained here for each of them, which ones we canvassed, the ones that come back non-detect, where we're pending results. So the first one that we're going to go through is the one out in Boone. So the red star on the map on the left indicates where we had an exceedance from a self-sample. And then the ones in the area around it that are the orange stars are places that we've identified that should be sampled to see if they're going to experience a sample of PFAS. So those are wells that we canvassed, see if they'll let us sample. Um we have those results back and they are all uh non-detect. And I'll explain that in a second, you might be questioning, but um. We'll also go through East Lake Mitchell, uh same sort of situation. So on the left there, we have the orange stars that are ones that we identified should probably be sampled. We asked for permission, the red stars, the original exceedance, and we were able to re-sample that, so we have on the right here. Uh non-detect and then one that's uh detected but below criteria. We have West Lake Mitchell, same sort of situation with the the red and the orange stars. And on the right, we have uh one of the results is pending, but we do have the original home back is non-detect. And then we have the non-detect from the north of that home. Uh Constitution Boulevard, uh we were not given permission to use the original home again, uh but we were able to sample some of the homes nearby. It had detections and one of them was non-detect. For South Forty-Five Road, uh we were able to get a few local uh homes to let us sample. The original home came back with a non-detect, uh to the north of that was uh detection below criteria, um. And we had the non-detect nearby. For the thirteenth and flat, that one we expanded out a little bit more than to the ones just next to it, um. So we have the uh star that's on the left map to the just above the halfway point, kind of to the left of that map. Um that was an Eagle test kit, so that wasn't a cyclopyr one, so we didn't re-sample that one because that just came through a lot uh to begin with. Um and then we had the uh the one to the bottom to the right, um we did re-sample that one. But on the right there, we have detections below criteria and we have a couple of results pending there with the gray dots. Um don't believe we were able to re-sample um the original exceedance from the left there, um. We weren't given permission from that one, but this one continues to be ongoing for sampling, um getting results back and this is in our weekly discussions, um. Discussing exactly what needs to happen next. Um we have East thirty-four Boone Road, that's the airport for everybody. Um so the original detection was the airports, um and we. Uh reached out to see what businesses um and what places have wells around the area that we would be able to sample. We had three that let us sample and um we're currently waiting for those results and they haven't come in yet. That's as early as this morning, so I apologize for that one. Um so I'm going to talk about cyclopyr self-test sample test kits. Um so the city of Cadillac has offered the cyclopyr tests to uh residents that have been sampled previously or been sampled by the Eagle and the M Part team. So uh Herring Township has also been uh coordinating some cyclopyr self-sampling and giving out kits. Um and these are provided to us for evaluations, so we meet every week and we discuss these. Um any of the results that are sent to the Eagle Lab are provided to us as well internally, but because we don't have the same. Uh permission for every sample, we uh haven't been sharing those on perhaps just because um we have to have permission for maybe sharing results. On maps of people's cells. Um but we use these to identify patterns, sources, potential additional investigations. Oh, and then we also uh the numbers on that, we have three hundred and fifty-four results back from the Cadillac area. And they keep coming in, so thank you guys so much for that. Um we really appreciate it and we've been discussing them every single week. Um so the cyclopyr and the Eagle Lab data, you might be kind of questioning. Why did they come back as a exceedance when and then when we sampled it was a non-detect? So we're still discussing that, we're talking with cyclopyr, kind of figuring out next steps on that. I'd wanted to discuss for a second. Um maybe the differences between cyclopyr and Eagle and where we can kind of uh pursue. Figuring out maybe what happens. So cyclopyr uses a bit of a different uh collection method. But they follow like similar lab methods as the EPA methods. So their website uh describes it as analysis of water samples uh is validated to the requirements of the EPA methods. Um that's just a more complex way to kind of say that first sentence. Um it's just a different collection method. So when you're collecting PFAS samples, it's incredibly sensitive. We're talking about parts per trillion and it's very hard to wrap your head around. Kind of how sensitive that has to be. So there's potential of for stuff like cross-contamination and anything like that, so that's why we try to keep to good methodology. Rigor sampling, quality control, that sort of thing, so that when something like this happens, we can kind of figure out maybe what happened. So um as a summary, also, we were able to re-sample uh six locations. Um we were only given permission to re-sample four that had the original exceedances, so. Um we really have four locations where the cyclopyr and the Eagle didn't quite match up. Um so we're looking at those results and I'll show those in just one second, side by side. Um and then Eagles Lab, uh just as a, we've sampled like six thousand uh samples, it's a certified lab, so we're running uh. Proven kind of uh procedures there for our lab as well. Um so we have the data side by side for the cyclopyr and the Eagle comparison, so each of these is one of the the results. Um we have the cyclopyr on the left and the Eagle Lab on the right, so we see it's the PFOA and PFOS most often that's coming back with. Be similar results and when we sample is a non-detect, so when we were going through the data and trying to analyze it for what was happening. Um this kind of brought up some questions, so that's what we're still looking into. We're discussing with cyclopyr, um. But the only other difference would be the one on the bottom left, which had a PFHPS that also showed up, but the other one is PFOA and PFOS. Um real quick, I'm also gonna pivot a little bit on this, so we also do a surface water sampling. So that is from lake streams, that sort of thing, just to grab sample from the surface water. Um there was no exceedances in the twenty twenty-two sampling events, um. And they were about background levels, um but. You see, we have these little purple dots there and those are uh. Samples that are be taking, are being taken today actually, so we'll get an updated dataset and they're doing quite a few more. Uh sampling locations from the area. Previously, it was only a few. These are also mapped on the M Part website. We have the surface water samples as a. As a little hexagon, I think that you can look at if you're curious, but we should be getting updated data on that soon. And I believe that's it, and I'll just stop. Thank you guys.
Thank you, Randy. Hello, everybody. Uh my name is Scott Konzerzky. Uh I work in the Emerging Contaminants Unit in the Drinking Water and Environmental Health Division. Oh, sorry, um at the bottom of the slide, you can see my contact information, my phone numbers, my email. Feel free to reach out to me at any time. Um I'll be around after the talk, if you want to uh discuss what I had to present here. I only have a couple of slides for you and then I'm going to hand it back to Abby. And then I think we're going to open it up for questions. So uh the Cadillac region is um uh supplied by uh primarily by two municipal community water supply systems. These are the Cadillac Community Water Supply System. And the uh Herring Charter Township Energy Water Supply System. City of Cadillac, uh both systems have been doing compliance monitoring since twenty twenty. When Michigan passed PFAS MCLs for the drinking water supplies. Um Cadillac uh is on annual monitoring and all of the historic since twenty twenty compliance monitoring has shown. Non-detections for all PFAS compounds tested. Uh unfortunately, Herring Township Community Water Supply has had small detections of PFAS in their drinking water. However, they have all fallen below our Michigan PFAS criteria. Uh the remainder of the region primarily use, uh excuse me, primarily utilizes private uh drinking water wells and non-community. Uh public water supplies, those are public water supplies that supply like schools and factories, but they're not intended for year-round residential use. Uh this graphic here, uh essentially, let's see if I can do this. Oops, there we are. Okay, so this graphic shows the two uh. Community public water supplies. Here is the uh service area for the Cadillac water system. And up above here, you can see that this is the Herring Charter Township. Service area and you see these little clusters of dots. Uh to the north and east, to the east and to the south, these represent either smaller community water supplies or non-community water supplies that also conduct. Compliance monitoring for PFAS. So I'm going to start up here and I'll work my way down, um. Here is Baker College and the Cadillac YMCA, those are both on annual monitoring, have never shown any PFAS in their drinking water. Uh this little cluster of three here is representative of the Westford Misaki ISD complex. They have had detections of one or more uh PFAS and all those supplies are in quarterly monitoring. We go to the east here. We go to the east, uh this dot here represents the um Curry House Assisted Living Facility, that's a small. Community water system. Uh that also has been free of PFAS and then this is the Emmanuel Lutheran Church, which also has had no PFAS detect, so both of those are on annual monitoring. Going to the south here, this cluster, uh this one here is the Evergreen Resort. Um they've only had one detection of PFAS and it's been well below magnitudes below uh any drinking water criteria. So they are on annual and then these two here, Benton Baker Buick and uh dental health professionals, those are both on quarterly. Those have had detections of one or more PFAS compounds above the MCL, uh those are on quarterly and um. Dental Health Professionals actually has a uh. Uh what we call an MCL violation, so they're running annual average over four quarters has exceeded uh one or more PFAS compounds. Same graphic, uh looking at this one, these large uh circled areas, those are the areas of interest. Uh for M Part that Brandy had spoke of where there's ongoing investigation. And then you can see these other little uh circular areas in these two rectangular areas. These are representative of uh areas where we're doing additional sampling. Based on uh self-sampling where we've had detections. Um from the community and then Eagle is reacting to those detections by going out and doing additional. Uh evaluation and assessment of those areas. So with that, I'm going to hand it back to Abby and then we'll open up for questions.
I think so. All right, last slide. Um thanks for hanging in there. I know it's a little warm in here, so uh just to kind of summarize, some one of the couple of. Uh big points that we really want to um point out for everybody is that if you're a private well owner. And you've sampled already and you want to share your results with us, um we would be happy to take them. We don't necessarily have to share them with us. Or share them with anybody else, but we would love to get that data, so if you've already sampled, fantastic. Um if you haven't sampled, we would encourage all private well owners to know what's in their drinking water. It's important for your your family, for your own public health. And it's good just to know, right? Um if you uh the filters, there are PFAS filters out there that uh Rob uh talked about, Josh talked about. So you know, getting a filter to protect your family is also another option. There's one million residential wells in the state of Michigan, so you guys are not alone, so the work that you guys are doing here at Cadillac. Directly translates to the work that we're doing across the state with other communities. So the lessons learned here are going to be very valuable for what we can do across the state, so thank you for that. Um we're going to continue to look at those self-samples. As long as we get data coming in the door, we're going to continue to look at that. Uh we're going to continue to see additional investigation or additional sampling is needed. We're going to continue to let the science and the data drive these decisions, so um. Lot of concerns out there, we're we're vetting a lot of things, trying to understand potential sources, what we're hearing from the community, what this data shows, what. Um you know, what these sampling results and differences mean to us. Uh lots of things that are under consideration and but we're going to continue to report out to the community because it's important for you guys to know. What we're thinking, where we're at, what the data is showing, we want to be as transparent as possible. So I'm going to stop there and um we'll open it up for questions and so because we are um. You know, videotaping this, I'm going to ask, we're going to share the microphone and pass it around, so. Uh Brandy, maybe you can grab the other microphone and we can kind of play a little Vanna. So who wants to start with the first question here? Let me, yes. So bear with us, we're going to help you. Make sure everybody can hear the question. So bear with us, we're gonna help make sure everybody can hear the questions.
Thank you. I was gonna ask a question about possible contamination sites. Being a lifetime resident of Cadillac, I know that the city dump was at the bottom of Cemetery Hill. It was there for decades. And of course, at the time, nobody lined their dump. So that's there from decades, as I said. And also at the same time, out around the north end of Lake Mitchell was the County Dome. Again, there for decades, unlined. And I'm wondering if there's been any looking at old dumps as possible sources? If it's a viable place for contaminations?
You, I can talk about generally statewide and I'm gonna let Brandy specifically talk about that particular question. So statewide, we have gone through and looked at all of the landfills that have liners and have caps and then the old dumps that don't have the liners, may not even have a cap. We have a whole variety of different types of, of dumps and landfills in the state of Michigan. We've prioritized all of those into three different buckets. The high priority ones are ones where we know there's already groundwater contamination from other contaminants and we know it might be impacting drinking water wells. We've gone through and sampled all of the high priority landfills and, and dumps already in the state. We're working on tier two, those where maybe it is not as much contamination or we're not sure if it's contaminated, or there may not be as many drinking water wells around it. We're looking at all of those. We are finding contamination at a lot of those high priority dumps, as you would expect. You know, the, about 70% of them will have a PFAS hit. In all of those cases, we have done these types of investigations around those landfills to make sure we're protecting public health. When it gets down to the lower types of dumps where there's no liner, there's no cap, it really depends on what was taken and the age of the dump. So something before the 1950s, 1960s, maybe there's not many PFAS products that would have been put into those dumps. Or if it was just, you know, township, municipal waste. We're not as terribly concerned as ones where you would have had industrial waste that would have been added to those particular dumps. So I'll stop there and let Brandy, if you wanna talk specifically.
Yes, stand up, sorry. Yeah. Yes, so one of the very first things that we do when we see PFAS in an area is try to figure out what from the record we have about it. A lot of these old dumps, we do have generally at least some information about it. I know that in the Cadillac area, we tried to do all the compiling that we could for everything nearby. We spent a lot of time trying to figure out what we have nearby. And specifically for the, the one that you mentioned that was in Cadillac, the Mackinac Trail area of investigation, kind of down by Vanry, if you are familiar with that much. We did evaluate that one quite a bit to see if that was potentially the source for the stuff that we were seeing there. But we didn't sample that for the contamination. But we do appreciate the community whenever they give us information on that because I live here, but I haven't lived here long enough to know a lot of the historic stuff. If you guys know anything for any of these areas, we're always welcome to it or welcome. You're always welcome to let us know, sorry. But.
Did that answer your question? Okay.
Thank you. This message is for Josh. On your, the more sampling of PFAS, and your list was from 2002, 2010. Is there any new study?
Any study, yeah, there are, there's new data. We just haven't updated the slides. And we also have a, I don't know, a program going on in Michigan, Michigan residents as well, so.
Oh, I just felt like to the. And then my second question, if you don't mind, and this is for Brandy. Regarding the Cyclopear and Eagle comparison, I'll go ahead, that screen there, could you bring that back up, please?
Yes, right there. I mean, I'm looking at that top right one and I'm seeing 19.4 and then I'm seeing the no detection. And I'm looking at those other ones and I'm going no detection wise. And so I guess I'm confused why. I mean, if one was like a point one, you know, detection, I could understand that because they're so similar. But that seems like there's a big, big difference.
Yes, so these are also from a similar batch. So when we were kind of looking at them, we got them all back or we got them at a similar time. So when we see stuff like this come in where it's, you know, 19 to nothing, that kind of makes us confused as well. So we've been looking into, discussing with Cyclopear, kind of what we can do to potentially do re-samples, maybe add a, add in like a third-party labs so that we can get someone other than just us and Cyclopears that we can kind of get to the bottom of why we're seeing something like this where there was an exceedance of something like 24 and then coming back with nothing. There's small variations when you're doing sampling, but it usually doesn't account for something like this. So we're still discussing.
Yeah, yeah. So this one's definitely a head scratcher for us. We don't really want to speculate on potential. There are some differences in the, not in the methodology, but in the sample collection, where we sample, those kinds of things. We still wouldn't expect to see this kind of difference. So yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna dive into this. We literally just got these results end of last week. And so we haven't had a chance to really sit down with both labs and go through the differences and try to figure this out. But it's gonna require some additional evaluation and some additional work, re-sampling because, you know, we want to make sure that we all get the full story and we understand the data. And this particular set of data is a little bit confusing.
Thank you, Abby. Chuck, me from Traverse City. When you get a cluster of detections at residential wells, do you ever go back and look at common denominators in the sampling? Whether Cyclopear versus Eagle, the aquifer that the wells are drawn from, shallow, intermediate or deep? And have you detected any, any trends or any smoking guns saying this particular aquifer, this level? Or maybe this source point feeds into this particular aquifer? Are, are those types of data where you, you follow on stream and look for the common denominators? Are those done?
Yes, so whenever we get results back, we look at all the information we can gather. So part of that's well records. So if we can find the record for a well and see that it's coming back with a detection at about 70 feet down or something similar to that, we'll look at wells nearby that are around the same depth, what portion of the aquifer they're in. That's usually about an intermediate aquifer in this area and that's where a lot of the wells are set. So when we're seeing detections come in, they're usually from about that portion of the aquifer. But yes, all of that stuff is evaluated. And then when we're discussing detections that come back and we see all of the wells in that little, in that area where there would be a cluster, we want to keep expanding out until we can get to the point where we have understood potentially what's causing it, maybe where the detections are coming from and reduce the exposure and the risk to residents. So we do look at all of those things.
Yeah, and, and one of the big differences in what we're doing here versus a true environmental investigation is with most of the environmental investigations, you would start at a business or an industry or some sort of a release point, and then you would work your way out to see how far it's spread. In this particular case, we don't know of a specific release. So we're working to look at, okay, let's look at the houses and figure out, does it look like there's something around these houses that might be a plume? Or might be some groundwater contamination? And so we're really looking at houses. And that's not really the best way to do an environmental investigation. We would actually install monitoring wells. And as Brandy said, we would set them at various different depths to try to understand the vertical component as well as the horizontal distribution. We don't necessarily have that opportunity to do that with this particular type of investigation. So we're really looking at trying to minimize public health risk with the sampling of the drinking water wells. So it's a little bit different than what we, what we normally do. So Steve, you got a question?
Since PFAS have been used in so many household items, is the results in the Cadillac community typical or unusual? Or could it be expected in other communities the same way, same kind of thing?
Yeah, again, I think it's gonna be pretty typical. I think what you're seeing here is gonna be pretty typical across a lot of cities. We've, we've, a lot of our work, we've got 335 PFAS sites. I'm looking at an A B, I think it's 335 different M Part sites across the state that have been identified. Most of those have a hotspot, so they're near an air force base or they're near an industry or something like that. In this particular case, this is different. This is a different scenario than what we've done. But what we have seen in a lot of other places that have done some self-sampling is you will get random hits that don't really necessarily make any sense. And so that's why we're really gonna use the lessons learned from this particular situation to look at other communities to see what else we've got. We've done some sampling in, in a few communities where we've, you know, done preventative precautionary sampling to look at PFAS. And we will get some low-level detections below criteria. But I think what we're seeing here is, is you've got potentially a lot of low-level sources out there. And we're getting these, these hits that don't necessarily mean there's one big giant groundwater plume, which is good and bad news, right? It's a lot harder to track. I mean, it's a lot of smaller sources or when you're, you know, trying to track something that, you know, was, is a little bit more randomized. Do you want to add anything to that? Yeah, good question. All right. Any other questions over here?
I understand that Mackinac Trail Middle School has two wells that are 300 plus feet deep. And one of them has tested positive. I know that's also in close proximity to dental professionals. Anyway, I'm wondering, are, are those wells being monitored on a regular basis as a school?
Yeah, that's what we would call a non-transient, non-community water supply. And they have to go through compliance monitoring with their water system. So those, that detection, I think it was one, I don't have the data in front of me, but it was one PFAS compound. It's a non-regulated compound and it was at a very low level. But that adds to the overall, you know, picture that we're getting here in Cadillac with all the other results and investigations that are going on. But yes, they are regularly sampled.
And I do think that the dental professionals in Bettin Baker Buick were also very deep wells. I think they were like 200 feet.
Yes, yeah. So that's a little concerning, but we're, we're evaluating that right now.
Yeah.
I know your data for health shows that your PFAS level goes down. Is that like, if I have a high exposure and I have PFAS in my blood system, will I expect it to drop over time if I have no more exposure? Or are there other things I can do to reduce the level of PFAS? Are there things we can do in our diet that would mitigate some of the exposure that we have? Because it sounds like, you know, if I go to the dentist, I might get PFAS. If I drink water from a bottle that is plastic, I might get PFAS, you know? So there's other sources that we're all gonna have to deal with at some point in our lives. So I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, that's a great question. PFAS does not stay in your body forever. We do have processes where we naturally get rid of PFAS. They're not particularly fast, but yeah, eventually the levels in your body to stop exposure will go down. So, yeah.
Depending on the length of the, of the individual PFAS. So PFOS is an eight-chain carbon molecule. It's gonna last longer than something that's a four-carbon chain molecule. So PFBS may only last, you know, weeks to months where PFOS may last five to seven years. So the half-life depends on each individual molecule. But, you know, having a clean drinking water source is definitely the best thing that you can do to protect yourself. And then you can work to try to understand the potential exposures in individual life. You know, there's food packaging, a lot of the food packaging industry is trying to get, eliminate PFAS from your food packaging. You know, there's a lot of testing going on. We're still trying to understand food in general. But I think drinking water is your primary source. And then, of course, if you're following East Bay Fish Guide for, it was just particular species of fish, in particular bodies of water that are more at risk for PFAS than others. So you really need to look at each individual lake to determine, you know, what those recommendations are for, for fish.
Oh, and I forgot the last part of your question was, is there like additional stuff that you could do to help eliminate PFAS from your body, not to the mess of my knowledge, really, so.
Yeah, yeah, there's no, there's no particular something that you could take to try to rid your PFAS record. So in the, in the chart, Josh, if you could bring up the N Hanes chart, I just wanted to go back to that for a minute. What the, that N Hanes diagram you might have been referring to in that, that shows part of the reason that happened is because the chemical manufacturers phased out PFOS and PFW from usage in this, in the Michigan or in this country. But there are other chemical manufacturers in other parts of the world that still make PFOS and PFW. So if you're giving hint for, so what we see is the PFOS specifically has gone down dramatically in the blood of the average American citizen. So this is a, a graph that represents the, all of the United States. What we don't see on this is the replacement chemicals that they have placed it with, the water. So, but our colleagues at DHHS are doing a Michigan-specific study to understand the concentrations of PFAS in the blood of Michanders. So we will have our own study and they will be doing how many chemicals? Forty?
Thirty-nine different PFAS.
Thirty-nine different PFAS. So our graph that we hopefully will be getting here in the next year or two will look substantially better than this. So this is the most recent data. This comes from CDC and, you know, N Hanes. So hopefully we can get another round of that data. So I just want to clarify that one. All right, the question's over here on the side of the room. I'm gonna go to her and I'll come back to you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here today. I appreciate your expertise. My question is in regards to those people on private wells that live within the city limits of Cadillac. And I guess I'm asking for a recommendation probably from somebody from the health department. If a person had a contaminated PFAS well, private well, and they were in the city limits, what would you recommend be the best solution? Just using the filters that are provided or hooking up to the municipal water supply that at this point, you know, we have good PFAS-free drinking water in Cadillac?
Good question, that, right on? To the question. So if you were, if you had a well inside the city, yeah, so my first recommendation would be, don't drink the water. And then what, what is a short-term solution for you? May, maybe a filter, but then we would, we would want to contact the city of Cadillac and the utility department to figure out the feasibility of, of hooking up to that municipal supply as, as a long-term solution. That, that, that's what I would tell you.
The other consideration for homeowners is, is that if you get, if you get a test and you know that you've got PFAS in your water, you want to sell your house, you do have to legally dispose that. So obviously, I know not everybody is comfortable with city water, but the city water is getting tested very often. And so in the long run, that's probably your best solution. But I know everybody's got very strong feelings about that. So I don't think we're gonna recommend anything to you. We're gonna hopefully give you all the information you need to make that your own personal choice.
And I would just add to that, that outside of PFAS, the city also does regular routine compliance monitoring for other contaminants of concern that you might not be aware of in your residential well. So.
A lot, quite a few, so.
Like to know if reverse oz to, if your distillation will take the PFAS out of your water, PFAS by distillation? Or reverse oz, most of the general would be best?
Okay. I'm not sure what you mean by distillation, but reverse osmosis can work if they're um, if you're properly maintaining it for your home. I know there are reverse osmosis out there that like work on your kitchen sink. They can work. Um, just know that when that reverse osmosis system flushes. It'll flush all those contaminants in your septic system. So just something else to consider. Um, but they they, we know that they can work if properly maintained. The thing with all of this stuff is you have to properly maintain your filters, have to properly maintain your your reverse osmosis. Um, and all of your other stuff, so. A distillation machine? I don't know, is anybody familiar?
Boils and condenses it basically.
Oh, yeah.
Distilled water.
Okay, it's not, in order to physically remove PFAS, it either has to go through carbon. Um, and be stripped, or um, in order to destroy PFAS, it has to get to about two thousand degrees. So I don't think your distiller is doing that. Yeah, yeah. It has a carbon filter. Well, our our refrigerators have carbon filters. But are they PFAS certified? I don't think so. And who changes their carbon filter on their fridge? Anybody? I don't see any here.
I still have a perfect filter.
And you touched on it just briefly here. But at past meetings, the. You folks have talked about septic tank contamination. Could somebody discuss that a little, and then I have a question.
Yeah, that's actually. You, do you want to add or no? Okay, um, I'll I'll start and Randy can jump in. Um, we know there's studies out there that talk about septic tanks and what they can potentially reach to the environment. We don't know how much of an issue it is in Michigan yet. Um, we would expect there's probably some cases of it, but we don't really understand. If that's gonna be a case for some of these individual locations here in Cadillac. So we don't have any Michigan specific data. Um, the studies show, they've done some studies out in England that do show that there's definitely some PFAS. Um, that is are in our septic tanks, but it's gonna be very individual to each home. Like if if I clean my carpets today, um, then that PFAS from my carpet cleaning is gonna be in my septic tank for quite a while. Um, but my neighbor never cleans, might have a great looking septic tank, so.
Uh, just as like a follow up as well, I think we may have discussed this at. Oh, I'll stand up. You may have discussed that previous one, but um, septic systems can be working perfectly, but they're not designed for PFAS. So it will reach out into the environment and part of the issue is it's a forever chemical. And that sort of like septic uh. Uh, contamination from PFAS can be incredibly localized. Stuff like that is gonna be very, very difficult to try to track down without specific investigations. You can make your uh best estimation with all the information that you have. All the information that we're gathering here, but without specific investigations. Um, it's gonna be very difficult to figure out a specific source or figure out if it is a septic tank causing those low level detections.
Plus our coarse soils also lead to contamination. Um, mercury contamination in surface waters and fisheries. Has pretty well been attributed to really long distance movement of air and then. Both wet and dry precipitation. Are there any studies on that with PFAS? Because, you know, it's showing up in our lakes and our fish, and where's it coming from?
Yes, there are studies out on atmospheric deposition and dispersion through the air. Um, we know that it happens. Um, it's. What we see out in like um, uh, North Carolina, they've got the Chemours plant out there. They know that they tracked that air boom from that facility like twenty-five miles. So we know that it happens. We know that some of the very short chain stuff will actually circle the earth and will cause more. Uh, dispersed contamination or dispersed concentrations in soils. Um, when that happens. Uh, we see more of the shorter chain and we're seeing most in soils. You won't see the groundwater contamination occurring from that unless it's from a like a localized source. Like you've got a a big chemical facility in your in your state and they're actually causing contamination. What we see in the fish is that when we have a groundwater pool that's venting to surface water. Then we see definitely, we can almost use the fish and some of those surface water concentrations to kind of track sources. So when we when we look at trying to track sources, we're definitely using surface water data. We're using the fish data, we're using groundwater data as well as, you know, historical community input data to try to understand that. Um, cause that does, and we do see in cases where we cut off some of those industrial sources. That the fish uh concentrations will go down quite a bit. And so you can see those fish actually clean up as they eliminate the PFAS and that uh PFAS is taken out of the surface water.
I do have a question.
Okay.
And I can, I can yell.
Okay.
Back to those maximum contaminant limits, MCLs. What is that? What does that mean if somebody's exposed to that? Is that chronic or is that long term? And I'm asking this in relation to the numbers that people are getting from their uh testing. Like what does it mean when you get a ten or something like that?
Yeah. Scott, you want to talk about that one, or do you want Josh?
Sorry, I was. Trying to change the size of that scale.
Yeah, so we're talking about the the difference between chronic, there's there's a couple of terminologies here. Chronic versus acute uh contaminants. So PFAS is considered a chronic contaminant. Means that your exposure to it over a lifetime could produce health uh consequences. Whereas an acute contaminant would be something where you're exposed to it over, you know, days, weeks. Months, and you could potentially get health effects. So acute means something uh very different in the toxicology world than a chronic contaminant. PFAS is a chronic contaminant. We expect that you you could have lifetime exposures and come up with these numbers. They both, you know, um, are set to standards so that we're being protective for public health. But there is a difference in our world about um, you know, an acute versus a chronic contaminant. Do you want either of them in your drinking water? No, no, you don't. But Josh, did you want to add anything else?
Yeah, and just for like those PFAS health outcomes and uh that that we shared, those are all examples. And they're primarily for when exposure is at higher concentrations and for longer periods of time. So none of those are like you drink PFAS today and tomorrow you get thyroid disease. It's more like you're drinking it for years and maybe you'll get a thyroid disease.
In in one of the um, the classic cases that we've got in our state is a a citizen we've got down in. The west side of the state who ended up with a hundred thousand parts per trillion in her drinking water. She does have, she does have thyroid issues. Um, but she was again drinking it for probably twenty years and not realizing it. So those are the, those are the extreme cases. Luckily, we're not dealing with that kind of a situation here, so that's good. All right, this gentleman's a patient.
Yes, we're all talking about water quality here and care about it. You've mentioned you test for other chemicals some places. What are your positions on uh fluoride or atrazine? Any communities getting that in uh water added to it? And what are your positions on chemicals like fluoride and atrazine?
I think I'd deflect that to you, uh, Brian Thurston, he's our divisions.
We've got more team for you, yeah, fine.
Hello, I'm Brian Thurston, Assistant Division Director for uh Drink Water Environmental Health Division at Eagle. And uh, we are testing for different, so the things that are federally with natural regular drinking water standards. The EPA sets up those standards are. And we test against Michigan um for all of our. Community water supplies, or non community, non transient water supplies, or tested against that set of parameters. And they give out consumer confidence reports, any detections that are given. That are filed in that are disclosed to the uh people that are drinking that water, so like saying Cadillac. They have something that comes in their annual consumer confidence report out to you and sent out to your your systems on their website. Um, those are how I mean to tell you if they have, most of the time they're not detected, all the the parameters in there. Uh, we do test for fluoride, um, natural occurring that's in there, and also sometimes people putting it in for health benefits. Um, the idea for fluorination to help clear teeth and and other things that are out there. So there is sometimes additives being placed in, but neither way, after they put it in. It's always, after anything is added to the system. We monitor at a point of entry to the distribution system. So it's after anything that is in, any chemicals used, anything being settled in the system that is going for fluorination or something. All of that at the final point, that's where it's tested. And so if we have anything there, if it hits above one of these, uh, there's an MCL set for fluoride at four parts per million. If it was to get at that level, there would have to be a immediate public notice, a tier two public notice. And in Michigan, if it goes above two, if there's any, there's a, that's their secondary level. But there's a public notice requirement in the consumer confidence report that would say that if it goes above two, they have to disclose, disclose language. And tell you how you may go to help yourself because it has some um negative health sticks on your teeth called modeling. And then there's other research that's being also looked at there. Um, not a lot of natural occurring fluoride in this area, doesn't really have much natural occurring fluoride. In the limestone formations in the north western and northeastern lower peninsula, there is a third amount of natural occurring fluoride. It's in, that's in the formation that um called Tasi Formation, or limestone formations have it. Uh, but we don't really have much in the area, in this area that would happen. The glacial formations that we have here, nobody goes to rock rocks seven hundred feet down.
We love atrazine.
An atrazine is. It would probably be on the net, we would test for it. I don't know if we have any locations that have there, but I'd have to look at that. I've not heard of um, anything that is directed less than right next to a chemical company that's producing something and we're tracking a plume from that. But uh, I I actually don't know if that's on the national primary drinking water. List of regulations is not one that uh has ever popped that I'm aware of.
That could be out there.
All right, thanks, Brian. I'm waiting on the side of the room. Come back over here. Speaking of teeth. Um, I was surprised to look at that list and uh and saw dental floss. So is this all dental floss? Is it, is it waxed, is it certain types? That's just a little question. My, uh, my other question is. The bio stuff that's being spread on uh farm fields as fertilizer. What is in that and is there, does it fit into the picture of PFAS? Question, I'll take the dental floss uh question, and then my other two assistants can come up in the back. Um, oof, not stand so close to this thing. Dental floss, I know that originally there was some talk about the Glide Dental Floss having PFAS. I do think that um, most of the manufacturers have tried to eliminate PFAS from their dental floss. But I, that would be something you have to look at brand by brand because it's not listed. I mean, there's generally not a list of ingredients on your dental floss, so, yeah. Yeah, and that's what makes it so hard is is that you don't always know if there's PFAS in your products because it's it's not always listed. So on your biosolids question, I do have the biosolids um supervisor here, yeah, actually the whole team. And so I'll let them, not a, sorry, Stephanie. And and they can answer questions on biosolids because it's a pretty com, well, it's complex. But it's um, something that we've been tackling as a state here and have a pretty good success rate, so. Tori, you want to start?
Hi, Victoria, sorry. I handle biosolids compliance for the Cadillac Bay City and Taylor Districts with Eagle. Um, so what are biosolids? On what a wastewater treatment plant receives their influence? The solids that are removed um during that process can be further treated to reduce the amount of pathogens and other pollutants in the material. And then that material can then be beneficially reused as a fertilizer alternative for farmers. Um, so these materials do have a lot of organic nutrients and uh organic matter and nutrients like nitrogen, phosphorus, potassium in them. Um, they are usually provided to farmers at little to no cost, so it's very uh appealing to farmers in the area. Um, but they are also heavily monitored for PFAS and other uh contaminants. Um, so I will let Stephanie here talk more about the PFAS monitoring that goes into the biosolid application.
I, I'm Stephanie Kemer, I'm Emerging Gluten Section Manager for Eagle in our Water Resources Division. Um, so we've been looking at biosolids and monitoring biosolids as a program since twenty twenty-one. We started initially looking at municipal waste water in both Apple and Biosalts back in twenty eighteen. So we are one of the first states to actually implement a program that requires monitoring of all biosolids that are. Um, before they're land applied. So we require monitoring once a year for most facilities. If the facility has what we call um EQ, uh Class A EQ biosolids, they actually monitor quarterly. Um, so like we like Cadillac is is one of those facilities, so they have their monitoring quarterly for PFAS. As as the Great Lakes Water Authority, who also applies up in this area. Um, they're monitoring quarterly also. Um, they sample basement results to us and Eagle, and they also are required to divide those results to the farmer and landowner prior to land application. We look at the results uh for the PFAS concentrations, we kind of have thresholds. Um, our program, you know, a big part of it is ensuring that we're not going to land apply what we call industrially impacted biosolids any anymore. Um, in the past, there was a potential that if a municipality was receiving um industrial processed water from an industry in the past. We were not monitoring for PFAS, right? It's emerging pollutants, so some of these um municipal plants weren't required to monitor. The industries weren't weren't, didn't know necessarily that those in their processed water. Um, that PFAS could e- end up impacting that treatment plant passing through in the apple and accumulating the biosolids. So we implemented this strategy to ensure we're not um going to be land applying any of those industrially impacted biosolids. That create the issues that you hear about on farms, like in the news. Um, what we are land applying, you know, we we look at, uh, we have thresholds if they're above a certain number. Uh, twenty parts per billion, we require mitigation when they land apply. Um, for this area, all of all three facilities that we've looked at have all been below average. They've not required any additional um efforts because their numbers have been very low. Um, when you look at them statewide. There's actually a flyer in the back table. Um, we've got like a six page flyer on biosolids, so you know, it's always a particular issue of concern up in this area. That provides additional information.
So is Cadillac's uh biosolids uh? Can you speak to that specifically?
Yeah, well below our limits for the, at least there's twenty parts per billion. We don't have any records of them ever going over that twenty parts per billion. Um, and again, there's monitoring that quarterly, um, and then same for their. So we don't have any record of Cadillac um for their PFAS results, they've always been well below that twenty parts per billion, that first tier. Um, which is why they're able to maintain their Class A exceptional quality status for biosolids, which is the highest level you can get. Um, and then for their heavy metals and all that other stuff, um, they also monitor that. And then they have had exceedances in the past, but the past five to six years, they've always been below, well below limits for uh any of those heavy metals like arsenic, lead. Uh, all those tested uh pollutants as well. And then we will be available for questions after, um, if you guys want to come up and talk to us.
Yeah, follow up on there. Um, so atrazine is on the national primary drink water list and is tested by all community and non transient, non community water systems. We'll be testing those on a routine basis. Um, on there and it's three parts per billion is the MCL for that. And so, and I'm not aware that we have any systems, um, we probably have some, we do get there, but I, in Cadillac, I don't think we have anything that I'm aware of, you guys. I'm not aware of anything that's there on the cities here. Yeah, so not aware of any problems.
Thank you.
All right, excellent, thanks, Brian. All right, um, did that answer your question on biosolids? Yeah, okay. Amy, you've got something real quick?
Oh, this is for Scott. Um, so so we don't leave people um concerned about going to the dentist and going to a car dealership. Can you explain what those two entities have to do since one or both of them had excesses of the drinking water?
Okay, um, so Ben Baker, uh, they've had individual exceedances of uh one or more PFAS compounds. And they go on quarterly monitoring, but compliance is determined by running annual average.
And they go on quarterly monitoring, but compliance is determined by running annual average because water quality can change over time. So they are not what we consider an MCL violation. The dental office is a MCL violation. And there, there are things that they need to do. They need to provide safe water. And usually this is considered a significant deficiency under the Safe Drinking Water Act. And there are actions that they have to take to either correct or reduce exposure through treatment, potentially drilling another well or using a different supply. And that program is overseen or monitored, administered by the local health department, overseen by the state. So I'm going to pass it on to Brian.
Yeah, just add, you know, it's ongoing at the dental office and we're currently looking for a long-term solution there. I don't want anyone to think that they can't go to that dentist office.
Are they currently on filters?
They currently do, they do have a filter and they're, they're currently working on a process of filtering for PFAS specifically. So more to come on that, but yeah, I would go get my team's thing there right now.
So from a, from a compliance standpoint, again, I can address this one here. My team works on these things here too. So it's a, at the dentist, at both of those locations, we're currently looking to basically in the present process. That goes because if they have a period of running exceed that running annual average and they're outside of compliance, then we'll work on working in a minute, what we call administrative consent agreement. Ultimately, the best solution, the only real solution there in, in my mind is that we're going to be extending Cadillac water up to surface area. And so that's, that's what we're working on. That's what my team, that's what Cadillac district staff are, are working on. On that with the city of Cadillac to potentially a solution that comes out there. And as you're probably aware, there's another, you know, there's a monsoon facility being built just to the south of that. And that right now is, that's looking to having water, public water coming from the city Cadillac to serve. And then that would go right past the one business and that's not that far off from the other one. And so those are probably where our ultimate solution is. And so basically what we will do, set up an agreement with them to provide that safeguards, those public health safeguards to make sure that people are protected in the, in that short term. And then working toward the long-term solution. We really don't want them to invest in large scale treatments that they try to take on that risk and also that overall burden to try to put in something that's going to be there. And then how do we do, you can work with that waste product and stuff. In this case, it's best to, they just we put them up so that's like.
All right. And I think we'll do one more question and then we'll give you guys a break.
I've been in public water regulation for a long time and, and Michigan has always been very consistently motivated to look for a safe source rather than to treat a contaminated source. So just tagging into what Brian said, we have, you know, some sources that are impacted. There are short-term solutions, but we're looking for a safe source rather than to treat in perpetuity. So I think the, you know, extension of public water is, is not always available in all situations. And in this particular situation, it is. And that's what we would be advocating for either under a consent agreement or just a voluntary connection.
All right, and I think this gentleman here can be our last question and then we can congregate out in the hallways, stay in and have a discussion.
Thank you. I live over a Gulf Stream and that was like where the super fun was because of Kaiser and everything with the chromium. Do you guys still test for the chromium? Is that part of any of this? I mean, because they kept all the wells up over there. So we don't know what kind of water in the regular wells are.
Yeah, do you want to answer that one?
Thank you.
Yes, so you're specifically talking about like people drinking, like drinking hundred miles out there, correct? So the Cadillac Industrial Park, the goal was to not have any residential wells out there. I know that last fall, we kind of discovered that that was not the case. We've been working since then to remove that. But we don't want people out there drinking that water just because of the amount of industry there. So if you ever drive through there and you see, we call them stickups. You see a lot of other like PVC pipes kind of sticking out of the ground or maybe some like random infrastructure in a field. A lot of that is infrastructure there to monitor at depth for like the plume of contamination for like chromium and stuff like that. The EPA heads up a lot of that. And they've been working on confirming that that's gone. But a lot of the, the results from the last, at least decade or so show that the concentrations are either gone or very, very low from what they were before. I apologize. The EPA has those numbers kind of like right off the cuff, but I don't recall them that well. But yes, we do monitor that sort of stuff. There's a lot of contamination out there that we just monitor that doesn't have to do with PFAS. But we also were out there checking for PFAS and they do have plans to do more testing out there as well. And then the state of Michigan also is looking into doing some more studies out there specifically going out there to test in areas that would be of interest to make sure that we can either protect citizens or kind of put a, a better line on where stuff is kind of falling there. But that's all in the, in the works right now. If that answers your full question.
We just have a few questions online, so I'm going to let Jim ask his questions and then we can share the mic at that.
Yeah, from our online audience, we do have a couple of questions. This one's about filters. So if you place the filter under your sink, what about the rest of the household water supply? Shouldn't there be a filter at the source coming into the home?
Um, so when we're talking about PFAS exposure, we're probably worried about ingestion. And so that's why the filter have to be, under the sink would be effective. It's removing all the PFAS right before you drink it. And the thing of note was that PFAS isn't easily absorbed through the skin and you can, it's still safe to use for bathing and cleaning. So generally you don't need to have those for the tires.
Okay, the other question was, does Eagle test primarily outside fasses or inside?
Usually outside spigot, right?
Yeah.
Just for, just for consistency, we usually test from the outside spigot when available. If there's not an available outside spigot, then we'll coordinate with the homeowner, go inside and sample from there.
Okay, last question though about fish safety. Lake and fish safety, any recommendations that consumption's good websites?
Oh, yes, please go on eat safefish. This website right here, michigan.gov/eat safefish. And you should be able to find most of the larger water bodies around the state.
And there are statewide recommendations as well. So if you don't see your specific lake, look at the statewide recommendations because there are generally mercury advisories for the whole state. So if you don't see one there for PFAS, definitely look at mercury because it is also toxic and you also want to be cognizant of that. And then just to go back to the other question about your Eagle samples, we generally sample from the outside spigot because we're trying to avoid all the inside water filters, you know, water softeners, all of that kind of stuff. It's not always an easy place to sample in-house because we're looking at the, we're looking at the actual source of water and trying to understand that. So, so that's where Eagle usually samples. But that's one of the considerations that we're going to be looking at in talking with and, and looking at our data compared to cycle peers as well as, as those kinds of considerations. All right, so thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it. And this is a very robust conversation. You guys endured the, it's a little warm here, sorry for the heat. But thanks for coming. This entire proceedings will be online. We will send you, if you signed up, you gave us your email. We will send you a link to the recording. We'll send you a copy of the slides and happy to take any of your other questions. We'll stay as long as you want and talk. We've got tons of things to do because we're always working on Cadillac, it seems like, but happy to stay and chat with you. So thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it.